Twenty-three Board of School Directors reorganization meeting is called to order. The Boyertown Area School District Board of School Directors' holdover members are Ms. Ruth Duroff, Mr. Anthony Panarello, and Mr. Jeffrey Zawada. At this time, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
By the Pledge of Allegiance and the Word of the United States of America, until the Republic of America stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Pursuant to Section 4-402 of the Pennsylvania School Code, this is to notify you that a meeting for reorganization of the Boyertown Area School District Board of School Directors is being held tonight, Thursday, December 7th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. at the Boyertown Area School District Education Center in the boardroom. The Boyertown Area School District Education Center address is 911 Montgomery Avenue, Boyertown, PA, 19512. For public comment, period one, we have no public speakers registered at this time. At this time, we will take nominations for an election of a temporary president. Are there any nominations for temporary president? Ms. Duroff?
I nominate Jeff, uh, Mr. Zawada.
Are there any other nominations for position of temporary president? Nominations for the position of temporary president are now closed. As the nominations are closed and there's only one candidate named, I move for Mr. Jeffrey Zawada's election. By acclamation for the position of temporary president, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
At this time, Mr. Zawada will take over the meeting.
Sitting at the newly-elected, re-elected board members, I will now review the certificates of election by reading them aloud and stating the name of the newly-elected and re-elected members. First, Ms. Kristian Nyman, Region 1, term of four years. Ms. Marion Scott, Region 1, term of two years. Mr. James Brophy, Region 2, term of four years. Mr. Roger Updegrove, Region 2, term of four years. Ms. Wendy Kratz, Region 3, term of four years. And Mr. Brad Updegrove, Region 3, term of four years.
Is he gonna do it as a group?
Yep.
Okay. Please, everybody, the people that I just mentioned, please stand.
Does anyone wish to have a Bible but didn't bring one? Oh, okay. Oh, you would like? Okay.
Or a couple of books that were thrown out of the library? Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this commonwealth
and the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of
and I will discharge the duties of
my office with fidelity.
My office with fidelity.
Congratulations to you, and may you take your seat at the board table.
The tables. I'll be careful.
Looking forward to working with you.
Ms. Nyman?
Well, we've already worked, but that's okay. And Ms. Nyman, and Ms. Scott, and Mr. Brophy, and Mr. Updegrove, number one. We're gonna rename, Brad, you'll be number two. Roger will be number one.
I am over.
At this time, we're gonna nominate, we're looking for nominations and the election of the president, temporary president. Are there any nominations on the position for board president? Ms. Nyman?
Roger Updegrove.
Are there any other nominations for the position of board president? Ms. Duroff? Any other nominations? Nominations for the position of board president are now closed. Okay. Multiple candidates have been nominated. A roll call vote is taken where each seated and sworn board member casts a vote for the nominee of their choice. The secretary tallies and announces the winner. In the event of a tie, nominees have the option to withdraw, and a new roll call takes place. Members are not required to vote the same nominee in the subsequent rounds of voting. The process repeats until a winner is declared. The president, the presiding officer may state, "All nominations are closed," and the candidate nominate, "I move for..."
So you're gonna go right to here.
Sorry about that. Each board member is polled and asked to state their name of their choice for board president and for the nominees. So, let's start.
So we have Mr. Updegrove, we have Mr. Panarello, and we have you. So now you're going to go to Ms. Denicola. She's gonna...
Okay. Ms. Denicola?
Mr. Brophy.
Present.
Oh, this is a vote for the board president?
Present.
You will vote for Mr. Roger Updegrove, Mr. Panarello, or Mr. Zawada?
I vote present.
Ms. Duroff? Mrs. Kratz? Ms. Nyman?
Roger Updegrove. We can't turn the mics on.
Try it now, Chris.
Mr. Updegrove, Roger.
Mr. Panarello.
I vote for myself.
Ms. Scott?
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Mr. Panarello.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Uh, myself.
Mr. Zawada.
Mr. Panarello.
Single majority, right? Yeah. Single majority. Mr. Panarello was elected as board member, or president.
Mr. Panarello was elected to board president and will assume the leadership of this meeting. At this point, we're gonna look for nominations for the election of vice president. I'm gonna nominate Ms. Zawada.
No. Are there any nominations?
Any nominations? Are there any nominations?
I, Mr. Zawada?
Any other nominations?
I'm gonna nominate myself.
Yeah, anyone can.
I nominate myself.
Each board member is polled and asked to state the name of their choice for the board vice president from the nominees.
Mr. Brophy.
Could you repeat, nominees are, please?
Mr. Zawada and Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Mr. Updegrove.
Ms. Duroff. Mrs. Kratz.
Mr. Zawada.
Ms. Nyman.
Mr. Updegrove.
Mr. Panarello.
Mr. Zawada.
Ms. Scott.
Mr. Zawada.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Mr. Updegrove.
Roger Updegrove.
Myself.
Mr. Zawada. We have a tie.
Yep. Ms. Mintz? Have to go through the nominations again. We have a tie. We don't have a majority, so we have to go through the nomination process again.
Are there any other nominations for the position of board vice president?
Are there additional?
Yeah.
Additional, you want additional? Okay.
At this point, we'll take another roll call vote. Again, the nominees are Mr. Jeff Zawada and Mr. Roger Updegrove for board vice president. Mr. Brophy.
Mr. Updegrove.
Ms. Duroff. Mrs. Kratz.
Mr. Zawada.
Ms. Nyman.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Mr. Panarello.
Mr. Zawada.
Mrs. Scott.
Mr. Zawada.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Mr. Updegrove.
Mr. Roger Updegrove. Mr. Zawada.
Since we have another tie, we have to elect a vice president by a majority of the votes. We have to start the nomination process again, until we receive enough person that receives the majority of the vote.
Are there any other nominations? There's not.
At this point, we will again take another roll call vote for the position of board vice president. The nominations being Mr. Jeff Zawada and Mr. Roger Updegrove. Mr. Brophy.
Mr. Updegrove.
Mrs. Kratz.
Mr. Zawada.
Ms. Nyman.
Mr. Updegrove.
Mr. Panarello.
Mr. Zawada.
Mrs. Scott.
Mr. Zawada.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Mr. Updegrove.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Myself.
Mr. Jeff Zawada. The vote is five votes for Mr. Zawada, four votes for Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Mr. Jeff Zawada was elected as board vice president. Now we're looking for the appointment of the BCIU representative fulfilling Ms. Hogan's term. In accordance with Act 316, passed December 21st, 1982, it is necessary for a director to be appointed by a majority vote of the Board of School Directors of the Boyertown School District to nominate and appoint a representative for the Berks County Intermediate Unit to fulfill the unexpired term ending June 30th, 2026. I nominate Brad Updegrove for the position of the BCIU representative. Ms. Duroff?
I nominate Jim Brophy.
Do we have a second on either one of those?
I second.
Mr. Zawada, you were seconding the nomination of Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
So, first by Ruth, second by Zawada. We'll take a roll call.
You have to go for that one, right?
Yeah, go to the next page, and you'll see that. We have Mr. Brophy for second, and Mr. Zawada for a second for each of the nominations.
Mr. Brophy seconded by? Mr. Brophy, your second was, your second of the motion was for Mr. Updegrove?
I'll withdraw.
So, I'm gonna leave a first and a second by him?
Can you second for yourself?
Can you second for yourself? So, we have Ruth's motion for Mr. Brophy, and Mr. Zawada's. Mr. Panarello's motion for Mr. Brophy. So, it's a vote of response.
There, you have to vote on that.
Yep, sir. So, you have to see that's the one I can take the vote for.
Okay.
I have a first. I have a first from Ruth Duroff, second by Jeffrey Zawada. Roll call vote.
We are voting for Mr. Brophy to appoint as our BCIU representative. Mr. Brophy. So, this will be a yes or no vote. So, it is a motion to appoint Mr. Brophy as the BCIU representative.
Okay. Yes.
But they didn't, that's the problem.
Right.
And we never said that. Is it appropriate?
It wasn't clear to Mr. Updegrove when the two people seconded that it wasn't for each person.
Let's start the whole thing again.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna start the nomination process again, as there was some confusion.
In accordance with Act 316, passed December 21st, 1982, it is necessary for a director to be appointed by a majority vote of the Board of School Directors of the Boyertown School District to nominate and appoint a representative for the Berks County Intermediate Unit to fulfill the unexpired term ending June 30th, 2026. I nominate Brad Updegrove for the position of BCIU representative.
Is there a second for that motion?
Ms. Duroff has her hand up.
Are there any other nominations? Ms. Duroff?
I nominate James Brophy.
Are there any other nominations at this time? Nominations are closed. At this point, we will take a roll call vote for, to appoint the representative to BCIU. The two nominations are for Mr. Brad Updegrove and Mr. Brophy. Mr. Brophy. Ms. Duroff.
Brophy.
Mrs. Kratz. Ms. Nyman.
Mr. Brophy.
Mr. Panarello.
Ms. Updegrove.
Mrs. Scott.
Mr. Brophy.
Mr. Brad Updegrove. Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Brad Updegrove.
Mr. Jeffrey Zawada. By a majority vote, Mr. Brophy has appointed the BCIU representative.
I read here.
We are at the signature stamp.
Okay.
So, do I have a motion right there?
Do I have a motion to authorize the use of existing signature stamp until a new one is prepared reflecting the board's new officers?
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Brophy motion.
Okay.
And our Updegrove. Do we have a first by Mr. Brophy?
I have first by Mr. Brophy, and second by Ms. Updegrove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes. On December 19th, 2023, the chair appointments for the following committees will be presented: Education, Student Services Committee, Facilities Committee, Finance Committee, and Policy At this time, it's, floor's open for board comments. Are nominations gonna be placed tonight, or are we looking for emails to be sent if they're interested in the position, Mr. President? There's no nominations.
All right. Congratulations to all of our board members, and I look forward to working with you.
Public comment period number two, Donia Savage.
Hi, everyone. Congratulations to all the re-elected and newly-elected board members. I wish you the best as you strive to do what is best for all our students and our entire community. Wendy and Brad, I look forward to seeing you apply your leadership skills to the board. And I'd also like to publicly thank our outgoing members with, with last week's cancellation. We really didn't get an opportunity to properly send them off. Brian Hemingway and Lisa Hogan both held themselves at a high standard as board members and refused to get caught up in drama. Brian was often the voice of reason regarding meeting conduct, keeping everybody on target as to what really was supposed to be going on. And Lisa was a model for students and adults alike by her example of continuous learning, advocacy at the state level, and keeping a focus on the students. So, I wanted to say publicly thank you to Mr. Hemingway and Ms. Hogan for their service.
Jane Machen?
Mackin?
Hi. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. Appreciate it. My name's Jeff Regner, thirty-three and a half year school and, school district employee, retired three years ago. At the November 14th board meeting, someone asked, "Why are all the groundskeepers leaving the district?" Who better to ask than one of them that left? That's me. 1982, I started as a part-time bus driver. I was a part-time custodian. I was a full-time second shift custodian. I was a head custodian at elementary school. I was a groundskeeper at an elementary school, and for the last fifteen years, I was the groundskeeper at Junior High East. Great career. Loved it at Boyertown. My wife graduated from here, I graduated from here, and my son was a 2008 student athlete at Boyertown, proud of Boyertown. So, to put it in a nutshell, the reason why, as of January 2nd, you're gonna lose 150 years of groundskeepers. One thing happened. You took us away from the principals and head custodian, and you put us under direction of the facilities department. Big mistake. Big mistake. That happened around 2017. It became a cluster. I spent more time driving around this school district in the last three years than I did the first twenty-some years I worked here. We were put in a large group, and we were told we had to work together. And that's a mess. You have ten properties, eleven if you count the edge center, and you had a group of four or five guys driving around this district, working at one school a day. Every school has needs every day. This time of the year, you go in at 6:30 in the morning, when I started, we had several entrances at East that were full of leaves. What happens when you open the doors, when the kids come into school? It's a, it's a hurricane right up the hallway with leaves. If that's not done at 6:30 in the morning, you got a problem. That's the first thing that happens every day. I, it's, the principals, the head custodian, the athletic leaders at the junior highs, and the athletic director at the high school worked together day in and day out. Day in and day out, there's communication. It got to the point where the facility director told me I had to report to the high school first thing every morning. So, that, first thing in the morning, at 6:30 or 7 o'clock, there was five of us at the high school. There wasn't one other school that had a... There wasn't one other school that had an outside guy there. And we were waiting for direction from a daily meeting with the facility director and the head groundskeeper of what we were going to do that day. I knew what had to be done at Junior High East. I knew what had to be done down there. There were fields that had to be lined, there was leaves that had to be cleaned up, there was grass that had to be mowed. It depended on what time of the year, it always changed. But the fact that I sat up in the senior high garage waiting for my instructions that day, when I knew there were things that had to be done at other schools, was absolutely ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. Those needs aren't being met. Here's a good example. We're over at the high school trimming bushes. This is in the summertime, probably, because that's when we trim bushes. All of a sudden, principal, head custodian of another school gets a call, or calls the facility director, whatever it may be. Our courtyards are a mess. We dropped everything, we run over to that school and put that fire out. Things don't get done. Chances are, by the time we get that done, we're going to another school to do something else. Bushes at high school are half-trimmed. I can tell you right now, I just drove past Boyer Town Elementary, there's still two piles of fiber sitting there from August that weren't spread yet, and we're in the middle of December. Fiber is what you put under the playground equipment. That's because they were filling cracks in parking lots this summer for over a month. That's ridiculous for our groundskeepers to be doing that. We have, Junior High West has five courtyards, Boyer Town Elementary, I think, has two. There's bushes to be trimmed, there's trees to be pruned up. There's a lot of things that have to be done. Our groundskeepers are filling cracks in parking lots. They were at three schools this summer. Guess what? Not one of them are done. Not one of them are done. And there's a lot of things that didn't get done. Like I said, fiber's still laying in Boyer Town Elementary. Groundskeepers must go back under the principals and the head custodians. I'm out three years, it doesn't affect me anymore, but I care. I really do care. That's why I left. I was only sixty years old when I retired. I could have worked another year and a half, I would have thirty-five years with the district, and I would have been sixty-two years old. I was so frustrated because I took pride in the school. I was at East, that was my school. It was my responsibility. If there was a problem with East, come to me. Who do you go to now? Who do you go to now? Nobody's in charge anymore. I shouldn't say in charge, nobody's responsible anymore. Now, I still in contact with a lot of guys, and I'm not here on my own tonight. I talked to other groundskeepers, retired, some still working. I talked to head custodians, some retired, some still working. And they all agreed with me. I told them what I was going to present tonight, and they said, "You're right on the money. You're right on the money." Now, as of January 2nd, you're going to have three groundskeepers in this district. You know how much time they have altogether?
Jeff, we got to wrap it up, but hang around for after the meeting, I'll talk to you.
About less than two years. If you get a big snowstorm, you're in trouble.
Jeff, can you hear me?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All upcoming meetings can be found on our Boyer Town website calendar. Our next voting meeting will be held December 19th, here at the Ed Center, 7:00 PM. January 9th, Committee at the Hall meeting will be at 7:00 PM here at the Ed Center. And then, the next meeting after that is January 23rd, Board of Directors meeting at 7:00 PM.
Motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.